Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regularly scheduled board meeting. Before we begin the work of the district, let us stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Can you silence that, please? Okay, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Superintendent.
Would you have any changes to the agenda for this evening?
No, ma'am.
All right, the only thing I have is an HR addendum that was added today, and that is item 9.01. At this time, we'll go on to the approval of the minutes. I recommend approval of the minutes from the regular school board meeting, April 12th, 2021, the school board workshop, April 19th, 2021, and the regular school board meeting, April 26th, 2021.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
For a. Okay, Superintendent, recommendation, representation.
We're excited to have some special presentations tonight, starting with the recognition of the 66 State Science and Engineering Fair winners.
Good evening, Chairman Mathias, Superintendent and Board members. It is my pleasure to introduce Amy Cockroft, our Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and a few other members of our team, to be able to award some recognition to some very fine students this evening.
Good evening, Chairman Mathias, Superintendent Carnegie and Board members. Thank you for allowing us to come tonight to highlight and celebrate the success of these spectacular scientists. The 2021 Virtual Lake County Science and Engineering Fair was a great success, and Lake County had three students attend and receive awards from the State Science and Engineering Fair of Florida. The State Science Fair had over 900 science fair projects, and over 1,200 students attended virtually. Lake County also had one student attend the Virtual International Science and Engineering Fair, which is a great honor because over 75 countries, students from over 75 countries attend from every corner of the world. I am so proud of these students who, through a virtual platform, were able to explain their projects and persevere in such unusual circumstances. At this time, I'd like to introduce Sonya Blackstone, our 6 through 12 Program Specialist for Science, and Brett Fontenot, our 6 through 12 Math Program Specialist, to announce these award winners.
Thank you. We had a wonderful virtual fair, and I want to thank Brett Fontenot here, my partner. It was very new and unusual, and then a lot of the students that did the virtual fair went on to state science fair, so that was very exciting. We have three students today that received awards at the State Science Fair, and like Ms. Cockroft said, it was over 900 projects. We have Paxton Martinez from Carver Middle School, who received honorable mention in the Junior Intelligent Machines Robotics and Systems Software category, and a $25 cash award from a regional science fair with his project, My Prosthetic Hand. I don't think Paxton is here tonight, but we will definitely get that to him to his school. Next, we have Landon Dodd from Windy Hill Middle School, who received second place in the Junior Engineering category, a $50 cash award from Florida Engineering Foundation, and a nomination for the 2021 Broadcom Masters Competition on his project Toilet Trouble. And it's going to take us a minute to give him all his awards, because there's a lot.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, yes. And then there's the check, which I'm sure he's a little excited about. Congratulations, Landon. Go ahead, let's take a picture.
Good job, Landon.
Congratulations, Landon. We now have Caitlin Dunn from Taverius High School, who received a $50 cash award from the Florida Teacher Association, a nomination for a scholarship to Florida Institute of Technology, covering half her tuition for all four years, for her project Biomaterial Fabrication Techniques: Preparing Decelerized Plants for the Use as Tissue Engineering Scaffolds. Caitlin, Caitlin also participated in the Virtual International Science Fair. She was interviewed last week, and we'll find out her results May 20th and 21st. Congratulations, Caitlin.
And are you going to do the proclamation? Okay, 4.02, Proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month.
Thank you. May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and so I brought to you this evening a proclamation that I asked that you consider signing. So whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans face challenges in life that can impact their mental health, especially during a pandemic, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas there are practical tools that all people can use to improve their mental health and increase resiliency, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention and treatment efforts. Now therefore be it resolved, as the school board of Lake County does hereby proclaim May 2021 as Mental Health Awareness Month, and all the public schools of Lake County and call upon school administrators, teachers, students, and citizens of Lake County to commit to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Thanks.
Okay.
At this time, I'd like to ask the board to approve the proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month as May 2021.
We have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
For a. Now we're into public input. Before we begin, I want to know, I want all of you to know that you're all welcome here, and this time is set aside for the citizens of Lake County to address the school board. This is not a question and answer time. It is not a political forum, nor is it time for personal accusations or derogatory remarks to or about school personnel. If you would like to address the board, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone. You will give your name, address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. We look forward to hearing from y'all. So we're going to start public input, and we're going to start with Mr. Cole Baxley.
My name is Cole Baxley. I live in Eustis, and I am a student at Eustis High School, and I'm also the junior class president for Eustis High School. And, you know, this year I was tasked with putting on prom, and with everything going on, you know, this year with COVID, our fundraisers were canceled, all of them, or most of them, and our venue changed six times. I just want to thank Ms. Carnegie and Ms. Carmen, head of the Education Foundation, for helping us put on prom. It was a wonderful time. I just want to say I am grateful to have a teacher that really cares about the student experience, the student high school experience. So thank you for that. We had a great time. It was awesome.
Well done. Okay, we'll have Anita Wilson.
Hello.
Hi.
Thank you. I'm a little nervous.
That's okay.
First time to a school board meeting.
Welcome. If you'll give us your name and address.
Anita Wilson, 25140 Rancher Lane, Paisley.
Thank you.
I just would like to address the school board in regards to the mask mandate for our children. I know that the governor has taken it off of all federal places. Being that this is mental health month now, this has really affected our children, which I'm sure that we all know. I happen to have a five-year-old grandson. He's autistic. He struggles every day. And I just think that it might be a good idea to understand it be optional next year possibly, and maybe we can reward our children a couple of weeks ahead of time and allowing them to go without masks for a couple of weeks. It would be very important to our children and the parents and the grandparents. And that's my main objective today.
Thank you. Mr. Comer, William Comer?
It's Comer, actually.
Comer?
Yes, sir, thank you. William Comer, 1918 Sunset Lane, Claremont. I'd like to start this out first, Ms. Carnegie and Ms. Felton should resign effective immediately due to the fact that they bind this critical race theory equity in SEL. This is nothing more than racist. If you believe it, then you should stand by it and put a minority in your position effective immediately. By not doing it, it shows what BS it really is. We all know it with a brain, but to try to, try to hurt our children, innocent children, with this stuff and turn them against each other is absurd on so many levels, and it should not happen. And you know it, because you don't go out and promote it all through the county. Also, I'd like to talk about the whole thing about, you know, we have two genders, chromosomes, people made up XX and XY. This thing where you guys hide it from the parents, about a kid at school can self-name, self-change, change their name and everything, and on the school, I've seen the internal docs. So you guys hide it from the parents, but then if you have a student meeting come in with parent conference, and you go back to their legal name, you guys are promoting and advocating gender dysphoria, which is a mental illness. And we're talking about Mental Illness Month here and stuff like that, and you guys promoting it and advocating it. It's actually absurd that y'all do this. And hopefully, the people that take your position and Felton's position, well, there shouldn't be one for Felton anyway. That's a waste of taxpayer money, mooching off the taxpayers of Lake County. But y'all, when y'all get this, your positions up, maybe the next person coming in will not allow this critical race theory. And SEL is just a Trojan horse for the critical race theory. I went through today and read everything on SEL. Nothing more than Trojan horse for it. And the school board, where are y'all? All this stuff's been going on. We've trusted you with our children. You guys have sat back and just let this stuff happen in these schools. My God, would you want your kid to go into a school and go and say, hey, your kid, your son, and come up with a girl's name and want to go to a girl, to a boy's bathroom or girl's bathroom, whatever it is, and then the school hide it from you? And then you come in, you find out later on they hid it from you? If it was my kid or grandkid, I'd sue every one of you. I'd sue the janitor. I'd sue every teacher. I'd sue everybody involved in that. This is absurd. Y'all do that, and you hide it. That's what's even more disturbing. You hide it because you know it's wrong. And you can't, it's just absurd from that, that going on. Also, let's see here. I put this together last minute, so I wasn't, I wasn't really. The honor roll, you guys go from A to B on it now. It's achievement? You can't even award a kid for being good and doing well in school? You have to turn around and call it achievement? What happened? We used to reward the people that were the best, and then, you know, the rising tide rises all ships. You guys forget about that. You guys go to lowest common denominator and forget about the great kid that's trying every day. His parents are working with him. Why don't you start addressing these parents, quit blaming the teachers, quit the parents. Say, hey, man, why don't you study with your kid, read to him at night? That's what we do with my kids and my grandkids. And the mask is just a whole, I thank God these other people are here. It's absurd. You put a mask on, dude, when a kid walked up to you. Kids don't even spread the dagum virus. We all know that. You guys, y'all should be leaders. There's, there's no emergency order in the state of Florida. Get rid of the damn mask once and for all. There is, I haven't worn one once, I never will.
Thank you, sir.
Flag of the Pumford Nation.
Thank you. Mr. Sardar.
You know, David Sardar, you can't make everybody happy, you know? Governor Sanders and our legislators, they've made laws. They don't change. I don't know if this gentleman knows what legislation's happened this year, but the teachers have gotten a $1,000 raise, and they've changed the laws. Laws are laws. You got to do what's going on. You know, you can't make everybody happy. I don't know, I go to Tallahassee. You know, the young man that came here, he's going to be the next President of the United States. He's taking action. I had a young man that was president of the College of Lake County, Junior College, where I came fourth in the country, fourth year of the school, where my sister picked the college of school, the junior college, that's a mega campus. You know, Governor Sanders is presidential material, you know? Many paths, the one goal. You know, this lady, Happy Mother's Day to everybody. And I'm hard to hear, and I'm an old, well, I'm old. You know, right here in Florida, we have the president's museum. And around our state, we have legislators taking action. This lady here, grandlady, not only was she a representative, was she a senator, she still don't mess with her arts or museums. This is Sarasota County, where Fiona McFarland, Mother's Day, thank every mother. My mother just turned 93, May 1st. My mother still tells me what to do, and I had to clean the toilets. God bless the young man. So, my mother had a list. I had to clean the floor. I should have been a teacher, like my sister, who was a kindergarten teacher until she got shot at. You know, we're lucky California doesn't even have schools. Our kids are going to school here in Florida. You got to do one thing at a time. You got to run for office. You got to get abuse. Hey, I got shot at. You know, I got people, well, you know all the presidents of the United States. There's a Buchanan. Well, there's a James Buchanan. Who's a Gargeson? There's a James Burne Buchanan, who is the chairman of the Agriculture, Environmental, Ploding Subcommittee. And, well, Arbor Day was the other day. There was a Darren, I don't understand why there's no prayer. At least Senator Baxley's got passed a bill for a moment of silence in school. But you go to, I was in a wild meeting this morning. We said a prayer. And, you know, we're all going to die. I came to retire. Most of these legislators are from the Midwest. This lady here, Nancy Dietrich, she's from Chicago land, where Michael Paul was, the L O I race archivist, '53 to '62. And Sarasota, the elementary kids, my dad was a principal St. School he went to as a child. They're worried about the environment. They're worried about their future. Your teachers are the leaders of Lake County. We don't have the traffic like they have on the coast. You can't even move around in Sarasota. You can't, because I didn't go to the Sarasota Six P. M. meeting. It was crap, traffic. We have a beautiful place, the Hurricanes around. We've got a wonderful place to live. I'm from Lake County, Illinois.
Thank you, sir.
Retired to Lake County, Florida. I love it here.
Thank you.
I got a mess.
Yes, you do.
I bet in the St. Capitol, somebody means you can't play. Nobody would.
Can we get some help, please?
Thank you. It was a historic session.
Danny Page.
Thank you. I didn't even show you the pictures in the center, so I'm taking pictures.
Danny Page, I'm with Inside Claremont, P O Box 2314, Claremont, Florida 34712. I'm here to discuss the irresponsibility and my disgust for this board, the superintendent, and of course, your precious Dr. Emily Felton. But anyhow, you have known about several sexual harassment allegations against Coach Edwards at East Ridge High School and have done nothing about it. One allegation in particular is a sexual battery of a young lady, and an in-house investigation was done, only for her to be told that because there was no witnesses, they couldn't help her. Are you kidding me? This was back, said back to her in February of this year, so why is Carnegie replying to current concerned parents' emails as it's being investigated? Because that's a damn lie. The case was closed three months ago. Let us not forget about the several staff members from the high school that came forward with sexual harassment allegations also against Coach Edwards. What'd you do about those? Why was Carnegie and Felton so upset about people coming forward about it? Don't want bad press? Afraid of being called a racist? Perhaps you'd like us to, to fill us in about the several football players that transferred to other schools because they were allegedly tired of listening to the coach talk sexually about their mothers, so much so that a fight allegedly occurred in the locker room over it. Lastly, perhaps you can answer why out of 60 applicants for the football coach position, you allowed a man to be picked that was arrested and charged with domestic violence in 2013? This is public record. And put on administrative leave in Bessemer, Alabama, however, charges were mysteriously later dismissed. Then on to 2014, where he was fired from a Jackson, Tennessee, school for unknown reasons, and the principal there refuses to give a statement. That in 2019 was fired in Meridian, Mississippi for a nude pic of himself, being leaked online allegedly to a kid's mom, even though Edwards states it was a girlfriend in Atlanta. By the way, I spoke to the news anchor in Mississippi and another person in Mississippi who alleged it was a kid's mom. And two people here in Claremont area that are also alleging he's doing the same to kids' moms here, hence why the kid's transferred. Is it because they hired him, is it because the assistant principal, Keith Hunt, at East Ridge High School, is the coach's fraternity brother? Or was the assistant athletic director high on something when he chose Edwards for the position? Because honestly, you'd have to almost be to hire this guy, okay? And there are three things I want y'all to know before I leave this podium tonight. One is there was an alleged crime that took place in your school. Two, that victim is now talking to law enforcement. And three, I'm not backing down, okay? I will not allow any kid or staff to be put in harm's way of any predator or continue to let the principals at the high school be complicit. And P.S., firing teachers or demoting them won't stop what's coming. I'm talking to you, Carnegie and Felton, as well as all school administrators in other schools, too. You know who you are. Y'all make me sick, every one of you.
Thank you. Crystal Wolf.
Hi, good evening. My name is Crystal Wolf, and I'm from Groveland, Florida. I'm the parent of three Lake County students, one of which graduated in 2018. Never did I think I would be standing in front of the Lake County School Board to express my concern that with only 18 days left of school, the parents of Lake County and the school board are at an impasse with the continued force mask mandate. We are told by Mrs. Carnegie and members of the school board that there are only X amount of days left and to just hang in there. Through email correspondence, I was told as long as nothing changes, the voluntary summer programs and the fall session will move forward to allow mask choice rather than mandate. The issue that I take with that statement is the very first five words, "As long as nothing changes." For me, this statement means that our students should no longer be forced to wear masks. It means that we are at a point that masks should no longer be mandated. What changes between now and June 7th? With all due respect, it seems that you all are not hearing us, and I know many parents have emailed and called you all, and that you are potentially doing the teachers' union bidding. Why else would you not change your mind and make it a choice right now? There are counties in Florida who have never had a mask mandate or that have lifted their mandate since the governor signed the suspension of the emergency order. My 15-year-old finds it harder to concentrate wearing a mask on her face. She complains of headaches. Her face is all broken up where the mask sits on her face all day because she is not breathing fresh air and is instead breathing dirty recycled air. She has never had a blemish in her life and does not understand why she cannot make a choice to come to school and not wear a mask, since as a family, we are educated on the survival rates of each age group and are comfortable in going out in public without a mask. This even includes my husband, who has pre-existing health conditions. My little six-year-old, she has gone backwards in her progress in reading and comprehension this past year. She's being held back in first grade now. She also has eczema, and we battle against her poor little face breaking out with dry patches every day from her being forced to wear a mask to school. She is also a shy little girl who would never go to school without a mask, as she would not want to make her teacher or administration mad at her. But for a shy child, it is hard for her not to see her teacher's expression, to see her smile. When she is trying to learn it, it's hard to concentrate on what the teacher is saying through a mask from her location in the classroom. As an adult, it's hard for me to understand what people are saying half the time behind their mask when I'm out in public. So I can't imagine what my little girl faces every day. I'm going to end this with a poem that my 15-year-old wrote and wanted me to read tonight. "One mask, two mask, three mask, four. Put on your mask, you yell as I walk through your door. Sitting here in class all day, trying to figure out what my friends and teachers say. I never thought I would look around and see faces hidden behind masks staring at me. You got to wear a mask even after taking a seat, but it's okay if you're going to eat. Can we please take these things off? We live in Florida, and wow, the heat. I hope that when school board members and our parents meet, that we will triumph and not feel defeat. With just a few weeks left, as tests abound, I would like to concentrate and feel strong and sound. I just have one last thing today to say. Please, God, let them hear as I pray. Thank you."
Thank you. Thank you very much. Cassie, I'm going to really butcher this. Kuscherzky? Cur, okay, I can read your print, sorry.
My name is Cassie Koharsky. I live at 9510 Bay Lake Road, Groveland, Florida. I appreciate being here. I've never been here before, and this is very much out of my comfort zone. I have three teens in the Lake County school system. I'm here, even though I am well aware, as many of us are, our opinions really don't matter. This virus has over 98. This virus has over a ninety-eight percent survival rate. You all know that, we know it. We are still fighting this policy because you made a promise to a mob-like organization. You made a promise to the teachers' union. You made an irresponsible promise that impacts the health and welfare of our children without even consulting us. So, I'm not here to ask permission, I'm not here to beg, I'm here to let you know where I stand. I've already let Ms. Carnegie know, I've already let Mr. Mathias know. We're done. My child will not wear masks to school anymore. He is my child, my daughter is my child, my other son is my child. They will no longer follow a policy that is harmful to their health. Doctors, dentists, psychologists have all said the same thing. There is more harm done by these masks than they are helping them. The facts, that the science of the mask show us, they don't do anything, anybody with common sense. My husband's in construction, he knows the particles of a virus are smaller. If he took one of these masks into his work and car, uh, cut concrete, the dust would come into his face, he would breathe it in. This is not science, this is politics. We're no longer accepting it. I know plenty of other parents stand behind me. We're done, and any harassment to my children will result in legal fight. Thank you."
Thank you. Mr. Yocum. Vance Yocum?
Oh, good, I get the cleanup spot.
It was you or Mr. Serdar?
Yes, one of, one of the other of us. Uh, well, I, I'm gonna start out with something that hasn't been discussed yet, that maybe, uh, is a new topic for, um, most people in government, it seems, and that's inflation. Uh, I lived through the Jimmy Carter years in California, when interest and inflation caused, uh, from them printing money, which is what's happening right now with the Biden administration, that it caused hyperinflation and interest rates were sixteen to twenty-two percent. People were losing their homes because the valuations went up, the government didn't reduce the property taxes, and their tax payments were higher than their home mortgage payments. Uh, I think, and a lot of people are predicting, that that is what is going to happen starting this year. And so I think that you need to start planning for that. I'm gonna ask the county that I think they ought to set aside a, a countywide organization to research the data on inflation and hyperinflation and start planning for it. And secondly, that they don't do as normal business, just pass through the costs for rising government costs, but to instead to reduce those costs along with the, the problems that are being caused by their constituents, the residents here and the taxpayers. Um, and I'll provide more information on that as, uh, in the future. Uh, secondly is that there was some discussion here, I don't have enough facts on this issue related to sexual harassment, but I do know that I have posted on my blog in the past where some unions really got a lot of problems because they were spending a lot of times defending people who were accused of that and getting them off, getting them transferred and everything, and they were not penalized. And I think that you need to be aware of that. I will dig up that information and I will forward that to you, because if the, if the unions are doing anything to protect this, if this is all true, and I don't know, I don't have enough information, I think that you need to have an independent investigation of it, not somebody that is currently part of the school system, but an independent person to go and do the review. And third, and, uh, is critical race theory. They brought that up, I was gonna talk about it anyway. Uh, this is, uh, from Hillsdale College. Uh, they have a publication here, Premise, with five, almost, well, five-point-six million readers. Readers, they all get this. I was in a meeting earlier this, a political meeting during lunch, and, uh, they were talking about this, and they were handing out this very article. The cover article is Critical Race Theory, what it is and how to fight it. I will send you a copy of that. I think that you should be very well aware, that a lot of people are aware of this, there are organizations out there, including the Villages, there are international speakers in this county right now speaking, and they're talking about that.
Thank you.
And many people are watching for evidence of that and asking parents to watch for it. Thank you.
Thank you. That ends public input. Reports?
Yeah, Carmen, call him back.
Good evening, Chairman, School Board, and Superintendent. The Education Foundation has had, um, one thousand and fifty-six teacher visits to our Apple Mart stores, and we've distributed eighty thousand dollars in supplies. Um, Wednesday will be the last day that the stores are open for this school year. The retirement dinner is May twenty-fifth at Venetian Gardens, um, the Venetian Center, and the deadline to R S V P is May fourteenth. Your individual invitations would have come from Sheila Bennett. We have committed to doing the reception at Claremont Middle School closing on June first, as well as the new teacher orientation launch on July twenty-eighth. Our teacher appreciation promotion has kicked off, and you can thank a teacher and show them how much they rock by purchasing a postcard that goes to the teacher for ten dollars. Two dollars from every sale goes to the SAC or the P T O at the school. And you can visit our website, um, to send your appreciation to our special, special teachers during Teacher Appreciation Month. We are also collaborating with T-Mobile, and five of our schools will be receiving a treat and delight, um, which includes free Quora coffee maker and tons of goodies delivered to their school, um, next week. And, uh, last week for the actual Teacher Appreciation Week, um, we were able to surprise and honor the teachers at Claremont, um, Middle School, every day with treats that were donated by Chick-fil-A, Dunkin' Donuts, and the foundation. We are planning on sending three thousand backpacks and supplies to our schools mid-July, um, with a price tag of twenty-seven thousand dollars. Um, we've been able to partner with the Salvation Army, and they will be purchasing a thousand of those backpacks, as well as giving us volunteers to help, um, pack and sort, uh, the backpacks for each of our elementary schools. Red for Ed, which is the community school-wide collection drive in July, um, does kick off on July the first. Um, this event is sponsored by that company, and we are going to be continuing on, um, with the online ordering system that worked so well last year, but we are, are making it a hybrid event and, uh, having actual donation drop-off locations. And Collier Financial Solutions is going to do the Shred for Ed event on July thirtieth, and donors can bring in school supplies in exchange for getting any of their documents shredded for free. Um, we got word today that Home Depot is gonna be donating fifty thousand masks. Um, they're valued at eighty-five hundred. Um, seeing the superintendent's, um, optional mask, um, we still will stock our stores with those as opposed to send an amount to schools, um, for any needs that continue on. Um, the board has voted to fund up to eighteen of the teams from, uh, Lake County that are qualified to attend the VEX robotic world competition, and so far, nine of them have applied for those fundings. Um, Lake County will be hosting the first in-person meeting of the Consortium Executive Directors on June the ninth and tenth in Mission Inn. So we have the opportunity to show off for fifty executive directors of foundations from around the state. Take Stock held their graduation breakfast, and the graduating seniors were awarded their Florida Prepaid Cards on April the twenty-ninth. And contracts for our incoming class, um, of forty-four new students into the scholarship program will deadline on May thirteenth. Um, we got a wonderful surprise from the Villages Rotary Club, uh, even though they didn't have their annual chili cook-off, which is their major fundraiser, um, they gave us a donation of twelve thousand five hundred dollars this year to purchase scholarships for Take Stock and children. Ladies for Education, which is presented by the Shaw Charitable Trust, Tees Off with the sold-out flight on Friday. And May Term Professional Engineering and Orlando Health are also sponsors of this event. And our stepping out for education stars have been named, and they are the Mayor of Claremont, Tim Murray, Kristen Janison from Success Mortgage, Tyler Borowski from the, he's a deputy at the Tax Collector Office, Dina Simpson from Renew Day Spa, Jerome Brarhard, owner of Maggie's Attic, and husband of our principal, Nicole, uh, who is also a Miraval winner, Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Emily Felton. And our encore performer is Superintendent Diane Carnegie. Uh, we have a whole new format this year. Uh, the event is held July twenty-third and twenty-fourth at the Claremont Forming Arts Center. And we're so excited because the opening reception is being catered by our high school culinary chefs and their, um, students. And the dessert reception, um, during intermission, sponsored by Kefco, uh, is also going to be created by our chefs, so we're happy to bring it back home, um, to our family. And, uh, tickets should go on sale next week. Um, the next foundation meeting is May the twenty-sixth at noon, it's a Zoom meeting, and we did hold our first, uh, in-person foundation, uh, board meeting in April, and that was the strategic plan. So your foundation is planning, we're getting ready for next year, and we're very excited to support you. Um, are there any questions?
Great job, Carmen.
Thank you.
Amazing year.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
I have nothing to report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Superintendent?
Recommend approval of consent agenda items eight-point-oh-one to ten-point-oh-five.
You have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four-oh.
We have one discussion item, and I'll turn that over to Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, this is item eleven-point-oh-one, a request, uh, by Mrs. Cunningham to attend Annual Florida School Boards Association Conference, June ninth through eleventh, with a financial impact of eight-hundred-and-three dollars. Under the amended statute, the statute was amended, I think, in two thousand and nineteen, um, the school, each member of the school board is allowed from the budget to be, receive reimbursement of travel expenses, provided the travel outside the district exceeds five hundred dollars. It requires prior approval by the district's school board to confirm that such travel is for official business of the school district and complies with the rules of the Board of Education. If there's anyone here this evening that wishes to speak to this particular item, please come forward to the podium at this time.
Vance Yocum, just as your fiscal watchdog, I'd like to suggest something that a lot of times I see these trips in here, uh, and for staff and people going to these events, but I never hear that they learned anything or they shared it. So I would request that maybe when, if you do go to that meeting, that you come back and, and share some of the things that you learned, uh, and some of the, maybe the improvements that can be used here, or lessons learned that you pick up from other people who are going through probably worse things than this county ever does. Uh, and with that, that's what I suggest, is that I would like to see some sort of feedback going on when you have these people going to trips, and we never hear anything about, you know, what they learned, did they share it? And if it's staff, did they share it, uh, with other staff, train the trainers, that sort of thing? Thanks. Is there anyone else?
Even Serdar?
No, I have a suggestion. I, you know, you can't make everybody happy. You do a lot of things, there's a lot of things. You got, what, forty thousand students?
Yes, sir. Let's stay on topic with this.
Well, I believe in what you guys do. You, you get voted in, you know what you're doing, you've got a superintendent, you've got a lawyer, you've got, how many resource officers you got put into schools now? How many schools do you have? I don't have every one, but I've been around a lot of schools lately.
Mr. Serdar, we're dealing with a specific trip request.
Well, I believe in trips like that.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this? That closes the public input, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I recommend approval of eleven-point-oh-one, Ms. Cunningham's travel to represent the board at F S B A in June.
Here in the superintendent, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Four-oh. Okay, Superintendent's report?
Um, I just wanted to mention that I did send one letter of condolence to the family of Kim Davidson. Kim is an H R specialist in our human res, human resources department, and she lost her father, Chester Walton, so our condolences to her and her family. Um, I may steal some of your comments.
Okay.
Because I know we both attended, um, the Construction Academy's Habitat for Humanity event. There was one at Leesburg with those, with the Construction Academy, Mr. Mathias represented us there. So, and then I went to the one at Southlake, um, last Friday. And this is the event where the students have been working on the project, building a home for a needy family, um, in partnership with many of our, um, community partners, um, particularly, um, Don McGruder with Ro Buck, or Ro Mac, I mix that up, I mix that up every time, um, Ro Mac Builders, um, has been hugely instrumental in helping our Construction Academies to be such a success. All of our programs are full or they're at capacity, we're looking at how do we expand them as more students are wanting to be a part of the programs. The students actually spent many hours over the past several months building these homes, and, um, they're all beautiful, and it was really exciting to see the keys being passed from student to student, ultimately placed in the hands of the, the new homeowner. It was a very touching time, and I just want to say congratulations to those students. It was, um, they have learned a lot, and the students are earning industry certifications, and they're able to go out and get jobs, and, uh, summer opportunities for employment for them, and it just shows the strength of our career and technical education programs that we're so proud of. And, um, it's why we have three new ones starting next year, so we're really excited about that. Um, and graduations season kicked off last week with Lake Hills graduation, it was absolutely beautiful. So we're proud to be having, um, in-person graduation ceremonies again this year, and so, um, look forward to, to those in the weeks to come.
That was one thousand percent everything I was gonna talk about.
You know, because you were, he said all of them as well.
Okay, Mrs. Luke?
I actually have a couple, too. I also had the opportunity to attend, um, Taverius High School Teaching Academy, our very first graduate from the Teaching Academy program at Taverius High School. She plans to go, she already has her A A degree as well, and she's gonna go straight to U C F through the direct connect, and she signed an agreement to come back here to Lake County to teach, so it's our first of many, but the reception was done very well. Um, a huge thank you to Doug and, um, Kiana Peterson for the work they did, and Bonnie Watkins, who is the lead teacher at the Taverius High School Teaching Academy. This is a fun season because we get to celebrate a lot of accomplishments, and so I was really thankful for the work that was put into that ceremony to celebrate Ashley. She's a bright young lady with a really bright future. Um, I also wanted to mention that Eustace Middle School, Mount Dora, no, Eustace Middle School, Mount Dora Middle School, and Umatilla Middle School, and then the Region Three Mental Health Liaison put together a parents' morning and afternoon Zoom session, they invited me to be a part of it, and it was just a voluntary information session for parents to find out what's going on this summer in ways that the community can support them, the school can support them, and so we appreciate the recognition of Mental Health Awareness Month and the opportunity for parents to learn more, especially coming in the summer months, when sometimes they don't have the school connection to know what to do if their child needs help or if they need help. Um, so I wanted to say kudos to those ladies for doing a good job for that. Um, I also wanted to say thank you to Sherri for sending out a survey and to let you know that I received more emails about care here than I have about really a majority of the topics that we've discussed this school year, which is saying a lot, and so I appreciate the teachers that took the time, the employees to reach out and to tell us their story and to advocate for care here continuing to provide our service. So, um, thank you for that. I think it made a difference with our employees, and I certainly enjoyed hearing from them. Um, and then I also, I had to make sure, okay, um, I just wanted to send best wishes to Eustace High School's baseball team, they're playing in the regional quarterfinals tomorrow night at Bishop Moore, and the softball team will be playing in the regional quarterfinal tomorrow in Rockledge. in Rockledge, so I will be at that one, so send good thoughts and prayers to those young ladies and young men, they've worked hard representing well. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Dodd?
Yes, well, you, I'm afraid, jumped on my remarks there about CARE Here. You know, I was similarly going to express an appreciation for all these folks that reached out. Sometimes when we are forced to make decisions as board members, it's challenging when sometimes you've got some layers of removal that you don't really have all the information, and you just selectively get some pieces, and hearing from so many employees is just so refreshing to be able, for them to feel comfortable just openly sharing, reaching out to their school board members, that's just fantastic. And then, the other piece of, I don't know, thinking about that is just so refreshing, I guess I kind of turned back my mental clock a year ago and think about all the anxiety that was going into our seniors and whether or not they were gonna be able to have a graduation and missing out on proms and things of the sort, as we heard from a young man today. Give some praises for you Superintendent and the district for being able to find ways for these students to go out and celebrate, hold their proms, and now, as I'm seeing from the parent's side, more and more award ceremonies that are gonna be held in person, giving parents, once again, an opportunity to get back there with their kids and in school, that there's just so much value to that in-person stuff, and I'm just so excited about being able to do all those celebrations this year at this point, so it's good stuff.
Thank you. Just kind of him.
Well, first of all, I had the pleasure of attending the academic signing program at Taverius High School last week, and I'm very pleased and excited that there were 22 students who actually signed their intent for their continued postgraduate studies. That was, it was very moving. Also, I would say the Lake Hills graduation, along with Mr. Mathias and the Superintendent, that was also a very rewarding experience. Earlier this afternoon, I am the board's representative on Parks and Trails Committee for the County Commission, and I think there's going to be a very exciting time here in Lake County for those of you that are nature people. They have some excellent things planned. If you're not aware of all the wonderful opportunities that are soon going to be available to you, I would strongly urge you to visit their website. There's a lot of people that are doing an awful lot of good planning to make sure that Lake County residents see the use of their tax dollars. And last, Mr. Yocum, I would be more than happy to share what I learned at the convention. I have been attending previous things. As a new board member, I think it is extremely important that you always try to become as knowledgeable about your job, in any job, as possible, and the past events that I have attended have provided me with a great deal of knowledge, and I certainly am looking forward to learning even more at this conference, and I would be delighted to share that with anyone that would like to hear about it. So, with that said, always available to help you with your needs. Thank you.
So, I'd like to just repeat what the Superintendent said a minute ago, but not exactly. I think that, for those that don't know this, that the Construction Academies that we first started in Leesburg, then opened in Eustace and Southlake, was really the vision of the Superintendent and this board, that we would put forth more programs that were career and technical. These young men and women, when I watched them in Leesburg, in conjunction with RoMac Lumber, Don McGruder has been a leading force with the Commercial Contractors Association to provide opportunities for our kids in the summer, but also, they work side by side, and you saw that relationship as Don had each of the young men and women stand, take the keys, hand it to the next, and each say a word before they handed it to the proud folks that were gonna be occupying that house. It's more than just that education of building the home, they learned a little bit about giving back, and something to be said for our humanity, that we help each other, and that was the real message that I took away. I did attend, for my eighth year, Lake Hills, and I will tell you that if you don't know what that school is, it treats our most severely disabled kids. And to watch them as they have difficulty coming forward, many times, some can't communicate, that's been a major, if they could just speak, that is a major win, but the love of the staff and the parents that are so appreciative, if it doesn't touch you, then you're a pretty cold heart. And anyone that would want to go by and tour that school, I would encourage it, because it is the best of Lake County. I said that when I was first elected 11, eight years ago, and I stand by it today. It is an amazing school, period. So, and that's about all I know. So, with that said, me adjourned.